I'll now open the Ordinary Council meeting, 10th of December 2020. It's the last of this year and I would like to welcome all the councillors here to our last council meeting for the year. As I look around at attendance, we have full attendance from everyone and also like to then move on to the Welcome to Country. councillor Conzaman.
Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land upon which we meet. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, cultures and stories of a proud people.
Thank you councillor Conzaman. We'll move on to the opening prayer and councillor Tyler looking rather festive. Would you like to do the opening prayer first? I feel good Catholic boy, you could whip one off. There's a few there.
Heavenly Father, we come to you to die asking for your guidance, wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group and yet nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that affect the citizens of Ipswich City and continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of our community and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you councillor Tyler. Oh, okay. Thank you. We'll now move on to apologies and leave of absences. There are none. So we'll now move on to item five, which is the condolence motion and I have here a condolence motion for Gary Kenneth Parcell. So I move that council conveys condolences on behalf of the citizens of Ipswich to the family of the late Gary Kenneth Parcell. Gary passed away at Harrisville on the 30th of November 2020, aged 87 years. Gary played his entire rugby league career for one club, Ipswich Brothers, notching up 14 matches for Queensland and eight tests for Australia in the 1950s and 1960s. One of Gary's finest performances was at Greater Manchester in 1959 when he led the Kangaroos forward pack to a 22-14 win in front of a away crowd of 35,000 people. He ran out for the Kangaroos again in 1960 as one of the all Ipswich front rows that played in the opening match of the series against France alongside the late Noel Kelly and Dud Beatty. And closer to home, Gary scored the match-winning try in the final of the 1958 Belinda Cup, giving our city the victory over Toowoomba 15 to 10. That day, Jack Reardon wrote in the Courier-Mall that, quote, fiery, cruel tackling forward pack were once again the winning factor, unquote, and Gary was instrumental. He retired from the game in 1962 and has been remembered by the Australian Rugby League Commission Chairman, Peter Verlandi's AM, as a tough player in a tough era and a gentleman of the game. Gary survived by his wife Wynne, children and partners Heather, Gill, Ken, Joy, Cindy, Gary, Stephen and Trina, and 10 grandchildren, Clint, Joel, Jade, Kelly, Dane, Matt, Sam, Jack, Harry and Tom, and 11 great-grandchildren. What an accomplishment. To Ipswich, Queensland and Australia, Gary was an icon of rugby league. To the Parcell family, he was granddad or pop. Gary, may you rest in peace. I move that condolence motion. All those in favour, it's passed. Thank you very much. Now move on to item six, which is the tributes and there are nil. We'll move on to seven, the presentation of petitions. There are nil. And the next is number eight, presentations and deputations. My bless CEO.
I'd just like to note that Mayor Theresa Harding has received one of four Smart Cities Leaders Awards presented by the Smart Cities Council of Australia and New Zealand. The award recognises an individual who has made a significant contribution to advancing the smart cities movement. In a large part, this award also recognises council's establishment of the transparency and integrity hub. As the first Australian council to do so, Ipswich is leading the way in using and publishing data for transparency purposes. While the award was presented to the mayor and a recognition of her leadership and her initiative in this part, it's also an acknowledgement of all council and council officers who work so hard and very, very fast to get the transparency and integrity hub up and running. As the mayor noted in her acceptance speech, it's also a recognition of other smart city initiatives to ensure this council is the most transparent in the country, including live streaming of all ordinary and committee meetings.
Thank you very much, CEO, and I was delighted to accept this award from the Smart Cities Council of Australia and New Zealand. And as CEO said, the first thing I said in my acceptance speech was that this is actually for, I think, all of the council, for the councillors who were courageous and brave to make us the most open and transparent council in Australia, but also for the council organisation. Again, they are the first council in Australia to bring in something as revolutionary as this and so I can see Miss Cooper in there, but to you and your team and CFO, thank you very much and CEO for being able to bring that in and it's great to see Ipswich get that award and get it all such a, I think boosts our reputation. We'll now move on to item nine, which is just public participation and there is nil. We'll then move on to the declarations of interest, number 10. I'll open up, are there any declarations of interest? Councillor Fickner.
Thanks, Mayor. In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act of 2009, I councillor Andrew Fickner inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in items number 14.6 entitled Ipswich Central redevelopment committee's report and also 15.1 Nicholas Street Precinct Stage Three. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is my business interest in both Barheisenberg Proprietary Limited and A1A Proprietary Limited located at 164 Brisbane Street in the top of town in Ipswich. I plan on dealing with this conflict by leaving the room while both matters are discussed and voted on.
Thank you very much councillor Fickner. Are there any other declarations of interest? Councillor Madison.
In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act of 2009, I councillor Jay Smith inform the meeting a declarable conflict of interest in items 14.6, Ipswich Central redevelopment committee report and 15.1 Nicholas Street Precinct Stage Three. The nature of this declarable conflict. My interest is I am a member of the executive of the Ipswich Trace Hall and like that committee, we found out building the Ipswich Trace Hall is immediately adjacent to some of the area concerned in these reports and I amend this conflict by leaving the room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you councillor Madison. So that was just for 14.6?
And 15.1.
And 15.1. Thank you very much. Are there any other declarations of interest? There being none. I'll just refer to the CEO. When we had the GIW, there was a declaration of interest from councillor Ireland for item 14.1, but we obviously voted for her to stay in the room. Does that carry on through this?
Yes. Once a conflict has been noted and resolved by council, the decision of the council stands while that specific matter is being considered on an ongoing basis.
Thank you very much. We may move on to now item number 11, which is the confirmation of the minutes of the ordinary meeting. May I please have a mover? Thank you councillor Fickner. And a seconder? Thank you councillor Milligan. I'll open up to any questions, debate and discussion. There being none, I'll then move to vote those in. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I can see that it's unanimous. Thank you. We'll move on to item 12, which is the mayoral minute and there is not one. So we move on to the next matter. Business outstanding, including conduct matters and matters lying on the table to be dealt with. So we've got 13 lifting matters from the table, which is to deal with the council committee meetings and briefings workshop dates for 2021 into 2022. And before we go ahead, I think we're going to amend or adjust one date. I note that the 28th...
You need to move the motion to the table, but you can discuss before...
Okay. I'll move a motion that we remove these matters from the table. And do I have a seconder? Thank you councillor Conzaman. Thank you. In that, we've, the thank you to the council organisation for coming to us with these revised dates after consulting with us. I just know we wish to change the 28th of February. I'm more than happy to come in on a Sunday, but I think maybe it was a bit of a typo. And we're changing that to the 25th of February. Councillor Conz, were you okay for us to change that to the 25th of February? Thank you. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer? Any questions? No, although I put up for discussion, debate. There being none, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's passed unanimously.
Yes. So we lifted it from the table, but now we actually need to...
To move it.
To specifically do all.
Okay. I move that the specific matter, 13.1, recommendation A. Looks like there's only recommendation A. May I ask for a seconder? Thank you councillor Conzaman. Any discussion or debate? None, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous. I've got a 13.1 in my pack. Notice it confirmation of the item number there? I've got it 13.1. Okay. But thank you. Yes. We're now moving to 13.2, which is a recommendation B. And there are two recommendations there, that section 12 of the policy titled councillor expenses reimbursement and administrative support policy be amended as detailed in attachment two and the revised policy titled investigations policy as detailed in attachment three be adopted. May I please have a mover? Thank you councillor Doyle. A seconder? Thank you councillor Fickner. Are there any questions that people would like to ask of the council officer, relevant council officer? No, I'll open the matter up for discussion and debate. There being none, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. We'll now move on to the next item, which is the reception and consideration of committee reports. Now we're looking at, I think, for this particular one that councillor Fickner is proposing to amend item 18 of the GIW committee. Would that be the McKell Institute?
So it depends on the form. You could move with the exception of item, such as... We can move it with item adjusted.
Okay. I'll just go through. So that was item 18 in that report. So I put forward that we'll move items one through to 17 and then item 19 together. Actually, the GRW has already been passed through, we don't need to do that.
You note, what you actually need to do is probably note those minutes and then you move a supplementary motion, which is an adjustment of that particular matter because there has been a notice of repeal lodged. So I think you could note those and then you would move a supplementary motion of a matter which relates to the clarification of the effect of...
Yep. You okay with that councillor Fickner?
Just to note the amendment?
Yes, so we'll move this and then do a substantive or supplementary motion.
Or we could move in batch noting the...
I'm happy to move in batch noting the amendments to the motion, or if that's not substantive.
No, because we're actually just, we're just receiving those minutes and so we shouldn't receive the minutes as they are and then move a supplementary motion because it has full delegation, so it's really council changing its decision.
In that case, I'll ask for someone to move the report as it is. Thank you councillor Doyle. And a seconder? Thank you councillor Milligan. I put for discussion, only we're just noting that. There being none, I'll then put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. I'll hand over to you now councillor Fickner, if you wish to move a supplementary motion to that report.
Just clarification on the number of the item in GIW there, may I?
It was item 18 in the GIW on the day, yeah.
So I would just like to move some amendments to the motion as per the email that I sent out last week. So... So I'll be asking us to repeal the decision of council at the growth infrastructure and waste committee of last week and that we endorse the new recommendations proposed in the email circulated and that appear in the agenda on today. So that will be... Where are we? We're moving A, B, M, C and D.
So you're moving that. Do I have a seconder? Thank you councillor Doyle. Would anyone like to debate? I know we've had this in our packs for some time, for a week.
Could I just clarify procedurally, Mayor? So that motion is actually, was adopted under delegation at the committee, right? Is that correct?
That is correct, under full delegation.
So this motion is to repeal that motion?
It's really a repeal or adjust. It's effectively, we call it a repeal, but it'll be an adjustment to the motion. It hasn't been implemented, so there it's... be an adjustment to the motion. It hasn't been implemented, so there it's capable of being adjusted.
So this is not really an amendment. This is an adoption of a fresh motion by council.
Yeah. Well, it's a repeal of an existing motion and an adoption of a fresh motion.
Rather than an amendment. I'm just clarifying that it shouldn't be referred to as an amendment.
Yeah. So that's why it's a supplementary motion. So we've just adopted the G I W minutes.
Yes.
And now we're saying, in those minutes, there is, we, there is a point that hasn't been implemented, and we wish to adjust that motion to provide some more clarity and slightly redirect it.
You happy with that, Council Tully?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm just speaking to it briefly. Yeah, it, the motion that I put forward today is truly reflective of the outcome that I was hoping to achieve at last week's growth infrastructure and waste committee. And I'm happy to put this forward today.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other discussion or debate for this supplementary motion? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I see it's unanimous. Thank you. Oh, my apologies. Council Doyle was the seconder. Thank you. We now move on to item 14.2, which is the Governors and Transparency Committee Report. And the recommendations that council adopt, the recommendations of the Governors and Transparency Committee Report of 2020, number five, of the 3rd of December. And I'll- Oh, yes. I'll hand over to the Chair of that. I'm just reminded to press the button on the microphone.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a pretty productive meeting last week, dealt with a number of matters. The particular item that I'll raise is that we have asked for a quarterly update of the iVolve project. We want to keep a close look on that, as it's a major opportunity to revolutionise council's I C T systems and do it in a way that drives better value for money for ratepayers. With that being said, I believe that we can just move the whole report. Let me just find it there. Yeah. So I'll move the entire report as is.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a seconder for that, G T C? Thank you very much, Council Doyle. Would anyone like to speak to a relevant council officer about that report? No, I'll open it up for discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Council Madsen. We now move on to the next item, which is 14.3, which is the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee, that council adopts the recommendation of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee Report 2020, number five, of the 3rd of December 2020. May I ask the Chair to move that?
Yes, I would like to move that we accept the recommendations in batch, all of them, from the committee last week. Of note, we got to hear from the very impressive Michael Beckman, the Director of the Ipswich Art Gallery, and we had the pleasure of him stepping us through the entire programme for the next year, which was really exciting and great to see lots of Ipswich artists celebrated in our gallery next year as well. So I would like to move them all in batch.
Thank you very much, Council Fekner. Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you, Council Doyle. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on that report? No? Is there any discussion? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. We now move on to the item 14.4, Economic and Industry Development Committee. The report recommendation is that council adopt the recommendations of the Economic and Industry Development Committee Report, number 20, of 2020, number five, of the 3rd of December 2020. I'll now move to the Chair if they would like to move that report.
I would just like to move their recommendation. It was a huge agenda. So if we just move it as a batch to confirm the minutes of the prior meeting, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Council Fekner. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer? Any questions? No? I'll then open up for discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the report to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to 14.5, Environment and Sustainability Committee. That recommendation of the report is that council adopt the recommendations of the Environment and Sustainability Committee Report of 2020, number five, of the 3rd of December 2020. I'll now hand over to the Chair of that to move that report.
Thank you, Mayor. There are two items there. I'd like to move them in batch, one being Environment Sustainability Committee Report from meeting four of 2020 on 19 November. And also the adoption of item two, Adoption of Ipswich Platypus Recovery Plan. In doing so, I'd just simply like to highlight once again, thanks from the appreciation from the council for the fine work that council officer Tim Shield has played in his role as planning officer of biodiversity for the multiple years of effort that's been put in to achieve such a fantastic outcome. So I'll move those two items in batch.
Thank you very much, Council Milligan. Thank you, Council Fekner, for seconding that. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer? Any questions? No? I'll then open up for discussion.
Just to you, Mayor, I echo the sentiment of Councilor Milligan's commentary this morning. It is absolutely wonderful to know, as of last week's committee, that we're one of the only councils in the whole of Australia that has cared to map the population of all of the platypoda in our region. So it's a wonderful five-year effort that the team have put in, and the results are there in the report. And I implore anyone who's even remotely interested in conservation or taking care of our natural environment to give it a read, because it's quite inspiring and it's got that peaking level of interest with one of our beautiful Australian icons right on the front cover.
Thank you, Council Fekner. And we sorted out the plural. Oh, we didn't sort out the plural of platypus. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Yes?
Yes, I'll just make a brief comment, Mayor, in relation to item two. When I was at school, we learnt platypai was the, platypus, platypai is the plural. So I don't think that's changed. I don't, I think a lot-
Council Tully, you should have been here for that meeting. There was three suggestions.
Platypai. It is definitely platypai. P I, not P I E. Most people don't realise that, you know, we do have significant areas of the city where there are platypus. Even I speak with some accuracy in relation to Woogaroo Creek at Goodna, going upstream from the mouth of the creek at the Brisbane River. Only two kilometres upstream or so, there's a platypus living there. I'll use platypus, but to consider it in the plural, in a bend of the creek. It's amazing how they can survive even through major floods. I'm told that they can burrow under this now, that they know the flood is coming. They can burrow under the water and escape even very strong floods which are coming downstream. I think this is really important. We're talking, as I say, only one and a half kilometres or so from the Ipswich motorway. It's amazing to think that we've got platypus living so close to suburbia. But they are a rather secretive sort of animal, in the sense that they're rarely seen by the community. And anything we can do to protect that species in our city is, you know, needs to be strongly supported.
Thank you, Council Tully.
Just through you, Mayor. And I know that I'm speaking out of order here, but I would like to stand by my pluralisation of platypus as platypoda, as per the professional advice received at last week's committee. The council officer favours platypoda as the pluralisation, although accepts platypuses and platypai as equally as correct as pluralisations of the word platypus.
I'll tell the Christian brothers I should never belt it, it's forgetting it wrong.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. I start with your festive Christmas ties, festive debate. Thank you. If there's no other discussion, I'll move that report be accepted. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous. We now move on to item 14.6, which is the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee, that council adopt the recommendations of the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee Report in 2020. My apologies, I'm running. Just note that Council Fekner and Council Madsen left the room. And the recommendation of that report is that council adopt the recommendations of the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee Report in 2020, number seven, of the 3rd of December. I'll now hand over to the Chair, Deputy Mayor, to move that report.
Thank you, Mayor. I propose that we batch all items one to three. Happy to say, I think at this stage, the Ipswich Central Redevelopment is speaking for itself very positively.
Thank you very much, Council. Seconded. Thank you, Council Consulman. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on it? Or any discussion? I think I'd just like to point out how wonderful it has been down at Toulma Place the last two weekends. And I think this weekend, we've still got a great day with the tap guys out there and pop-up bar, pop-up ice cream. I think there's a pop-up cinema even this Saturday as well. Nodding, shaking?
Yes. And not to forget, Mayor, the Carols on the Saturday, the 18th.
As well. Thank you. There's no further discussion. I'll put that report to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous. And I'll now wait for Council Fekner and Council Madsen to come back in. Oh, they do have a conflict. The next one. Well, that's handy, that it's one after the other. We'll move on to item 15.1. Which is the Nicola Street Precinct Stage Three. And that there are two recommendations there, that council endorsed proceeding with option one and option two A of the retail variation construction works as detailed in the report entitled Nicola Street Precinct Stage Three, and that council endorsed proceeding with option two B of the retail variation construction works as detailed in the report entitled Nicola Street Precinct Stage Three, subject to the execution of agreement for leases for 50% of Metro B tenancies. May I have someone move that, please? Thank you, Council Doyle. And a seconder for that? Thank you, Council Johnick. Would anyone like to ask any of the relevant council officers any questions on that? There being none, I'll then open that up for discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous. Thank you. We'll now move on to the next item, which are the no- wait for Councilor Fekner and Councilor Madsen to return. Yes. Sorry, I did forget that. Yes, so we've done the item 15.1 as well. Thank you. We are now up to item 16.1, Notice of Motion, Drug and Alcohol Testing for Councilors. The motion is that in the interest of transparency and accountability and to provide a safe, healthy and productive workforce that is focused on eliminating risks associated with the adverse effects of alcohol and other drugs in the workforce, council implement regular and random drug and alcohol testing for all councillors with effect from the 1st of February 2021. And that was a notice of motion from Council Tully. I'm assuming that you wish to move that?
Yes, I'll formally move that, Mayor.
Thank you. And do I have a seconder for that? Thank you, Council of Ireland. I believe we have a foreshadowed motion.
Thank you, Mayor. On the basis that I don't believe Councilor Tully's notice of motion meets the substantive motion threshold, I propose a foreshadowed motion.
Thank you. Would you like to propose that foreshadowed motion?
Okay. And I'd just like to point out that this was discussed by all councillors at various times over the last several months, this idea of drug and alcohol testing. I propose that the CEO provide a report to council in March for consideration, which outlines all procedures, including a draft of the proposed drug and alcohol testing policy to test elected officials for drugs and alcohol, in line with proposed testing for council officers. Okay. That the CEO provide a report to council in March for consideration, which outlines all procedures, including a draft of the proposed drug and alcohol testing policy to test elected officials for drugs and alcohol in line with the proposed testing for council officers.
Thank you, Council Doyle. So that's a foreshadowed motion. So we'll go to the original motion. I asked if you wished to speak to that?
Thanks, Mayor. I just need to clarify, the comment was made that all councils have been involved in some prior discussions about this over recent months. I certainly have not been involved in any discussion at all in relation to this matter. But I have moved the motion, and it's not unique to Ipswich. A number of the 77 councils in Queensland has moved to have policies of this nature. Some of them include Brisbane City, Moreton Bay, Bundaberg, Rockhampton, Livingstonshire Council, even the Whittenshire Council and the Locky Valley Council has a policy in relation to, Baku Council has a policy in relation to this as well. I think it's well known that, and it's important for us as a local government, to set the example to our staff and to our community. It's a situation where we need to be on the front foot in relation to an issue like this. I understand from a comment made during the week that the administration itself may be moving in relation to council staff. It's well known, the effect of alcohol and the adverse effects of alcohol and/or illicit drugs in the workplace. Many of these are policies of other councils place a point O five, a limit, like on the basis that if you can't drive a vehicle, you shouldn't be, and you'd be driving illegally or unlawfully, that that should be a limit that would apply, that does apply to councillors, which is probably a fairly sensible proposal. As I say, more and more councils are moving this way. I believe that it's something that should happen at all levels of government, not just in local government in Queensland, but in state and federal members. There's no reason that people in the workplace, and it's very, very common in the workplace nowadays, for mandatory and random testing to take place. As I say, it's not, it's not unique to Ipswich. This is certainly not first in Queensland. It's rather an extensive network of motions that are coming up through local government in the state. And I think we need to send a clear message to our community that, you know, we have a policy that applies to councillors. We'd expect all councillors to comply, you know, with that. And I trust that people would realise that. I would guess during this term of office, most councils in Queensland will probably move in this direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Tully. Any other discussion? Yes, Council Ireland?
May I ask a question, please? What is the limit that has been placed on our staff? Is it point five? Or is it, you know, what is it?
We did some consultation with the staff. We had a survey of, I think, 730-odd council staff. And two, there were a number of questions posed. One question was, do you support random testing? The vast majority of staff supported random testing for themselves. Then the question was, should, do you believe there should be a uniform level across the organisation, which because of a number of staff operate heavy machinery, et cetera, would be effectively a zero percent model? And that averses what was a proposal for a split model, which was point O five for those staff who didn't operate machinery, et cetera, and zero for those who did. and zero for those who did. The majority, a significant majority, but not overwhelmingly, supported a zero percent approach across the organisation. It's, there's still some consultation to be done with staff, but given the views of the staff, we're likely to follow that position.
Thank you, Council Island.
I just have another question for councillors. Because we work Saturdays and, you know, Friday nights, Saturdays, and usually you go to dinners. I'm just wondering what our percentage might be.
If I could say, Council, I think that's probably what the foreshadowed motions come forward. I think, I think councillors at Queensland have policies and procedures in place for drug and alcohol testing, both for staff and elected representatives. And as Council Tully points out, it's not uncommon. I concur with the intent of the motion, however, sorry, and everyone deserves to work in a safe workplace where colleagues are unimpaired. But to ensure a practical and considered rollout, I won't be voting for Council Tully's motion. I will be supporting the foreshadowed amendment put forward by Council Doyle. I think it's in keeping with good governance protocols. We do need to see a scoped, and I think Council have pointed out, there's a lot of questions that I think need to be fleshed out. But a properly scoped and costed policy should be brought back to council, I think, in March, which includes advice on the rollout of a council of drug and alcohol testing policy and details how this corresponds with the proposed procedure for the employee drug and alcohol testing regime, because there should be some type of equivalency in that. Any other discussion? In that case, I put the matter, I put Council Tully's motion to the vote. Those in favour? Oh, sorry, right reply. My apologies, Council Tully.
There's certainly details that would need to be fleshed out in relation to a policy of this nature, which could be done by the, over the next two months. I thank councillors for their questions and comments, but I do think as a council, we need to move forward with this proposal.
Thank you, Council. I now put the matter to the vote. Those in favour of Council Tully's motion, please raise your hand. I can see that Council Island and Council Tully have voted in the affirmative. Those against, please raise your hand. I can see myself, Council Fekner, Council Johnic, Council Madsen, Council Doyle, Council Milligan and Council Kunsman have voted against. The matter does not go up, so we are now, now looking at the foreshadowed motion. I'll ask for someone to, I'm guessing Council Doyle, you'll be moving that foreshadowed motion?
Yes, Mayor.
Which is that the CEO provide a report to council in March for consideration? Thank you, Vicky. Which outlines all procedures, including a draft of the proposed drug and alcohol testing policy to test elected officials for drugs and alcohol in line with the proposed testing of council officers. May I have a seconder for that motion? Thank you, Council Fekner. Would you like to ask a relevant council officer any questions on this? No, or there any discussion? Thank you, I think, Council Fekner?
Yep, just to you, Mayor. I'm supportive of the foreshadowed motion proposed by Councilor Doyle, in that I'm in favour of a pragmatic rollout of this. I stand in solidarity with the organisation, who we have become aware that they'll be rolling out a similar scheme. We have to identify the efficiencies from an economic perspective in this rollout. We can't be going to procurement twice to procure the same services. So it makes sense for us to bring that in line with what the organisation is doing. Yeah, I wholeheartedly believe that it's something that we need to move forward on, but the rollout needs to be considered and well thought out.
Thank you, Council Fekner. Council Madsen, who do you hand up?
I'd just like to raise that I support the intentions that Council Tully brought forward this morning, but I believe the path forward is better under the foreshadowed motion. There are a couple of points that I'd like to raise. Councilor Fekner's stole my bit a bit this morning. I really truly believe fundamentally that I'm happy to stand in solidarity with our workforce on this matter. I'm happy to be subjected to the same conditions that they are for their employment. I can't reiterate how strongly I feel that. It's, words, there aren't words in the English language that do it justice. But there's, there's some other points that I really have to raise here. I do not support these measures as some form of moral crusade. It's really important that as part of a procedure that goes down this path is that individuals are supported and connected with the right health and support services to manage their welfare. To err is human. And people make mistakes in their life. It doesn't mean that they should be written off. It means that we should get around them, we should support them, we should value them as part of our council organisation. And we should be committed to ensuring that they too can come here in the best state to work.
Thank you very much, Council Madsen. Does anyone else who'd like to make any other discussion? There being no discussion, I put that foreshadowed motion to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. See, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next. Which is the notice of motion to repeal of a council decision. I have, Council Tully has gave notice of his intention to move the following motion at council's ordinary meeting of today. And that the motion is that the decision of the council to adopt item six of the Governance and Transparency Committee report made on the twenty-sixth of November twenty twenty be rescinded and repealed. That item six of the Governance and Transparency Committee adopted at that meeting was A, that council resolved that councillor expenses for current serving councillors are published only for those who have provided either their express or implied consent to their personal information being published on the Transparency Integrity Hub. And B, that council note that the application for a waiver from its obligation to comply with the privacy principles in the public interest in line with section one five seven of the Information Privacy Act two thousand and nine, in order for certain prescribed personal information of councillors and directors of controlled beneficial entities to be published on the Transparency Integrity Hub is proceeding. I'll hand over to you, Council Tully, to move that.
Yes, I'll formally move that motion, Mayor.
Do I have anyone who will second that? Thank you very much, Council Island. Does anyone wish to speak to any of the council officers in regards to this motion?
I would like to just speak to an officer.
Yep, who would you like to?
Whoever's brought the report to council.
So with that. Ms Cooper or Mr Dunlevy? We have Mr Dunlevy here as well. Anyone standing your name and your position, please?
Sonia Cooper, General Manager, Corporate Services.
Council Island, you have a question?
Ms Cooper, I still don't understand implied consent. I really need a good definition. I understand express, that people have signed and said yes, but what does implied consent mean?
So the Information Privacy Act, as referred in the report and mentioned at the council and committee discussion, we're really quoting from the legislation, referring to the legislation councillor. I can look up the English dictionary meaning of implied, but effectively we're relying upon Information Privacy Principle eleven, limits on disclosure, which at eleven one B states the individual has expressly or impliedly agreed to the disclosure.
So you haven't gone back to the commission or whoever put that out and asked them what do they mean by implied? I'm just really nervous with that word. So you haven't gone back to the act to find out exactly what they're trying to get at?
We have, we've searched through the legislation and there is no different definition to implied in the legislation. It's taken to have its, its meaning in the English language.
But I could imply something, but you could infer it differently. So that's why I'm just really nervous.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions of Ms Cooper? Thank you, Ms Cooper.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do we should ask Mr Dunlevy? Any questions or? No? Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I think the, the comments or questions raised by Council Island highlight this issue. And I might open my, my comments in relation to the reporting in the Queensland Times, which I thought was very unfair following the last meeting, because councillors will recall that I said that I supported that original motion, except for one word in that, in that document. And because it was a significant word and it affected people's rights, people particularly on a former council, I couldn't vote for it. But I did support, and I state again today, I do support the intention of that motion, but not that use of the word implied. The word implied can have many shades of meaning. It's not defined, except perhaps in dictionaries, and I've got a couple of examples here. The High Court has grappled with the meaning of the word implied in terms of implied rights of free speech under the Australian Constitution. And they have grappled, these are High Court judges, they have grappled for years in relation to what are implied rights. It raises the question too of the often misused, misused English of the words I imply or infer. The implication comes from the originator, the inference is taken by a third party. There was a famous English court case in relation to contract, Felthouse and Bindley, where, where the court ruled that silence could never be construed as consent or an implied consent in a contractual sense. Well, we're not talking about that here, but we raise the issue that the motion and the decision as it stands would mean that someone in the council would have to determine whether or not an implied consent was given. Is that, is that to be determined by a junior officer, by the city solicitor or by the CEO? There is no indication at all of how one might determine or who might determine whether an implied consent is given. Now, I'm talking about people's rights, I'm talking about former councillors, good councillors like Kerry Silver, David Morrison, Cheryl Bromwich, David Polkey, David Martin, Wayne Went, Bruce Kasos, Trevan Adi, Heather Morrow. I'm sort of saying, well, on what they said or did, on what interpretation could it be implied that they've given their consent for this? If they haven't given any consent or given any indication at all. I, I think it's a, a clear situation where.
If I could just interject there, Council Tully, the result, the motion is quite clear that it's current serving councils, not previous ones, so I think that's irrelevant to the discussion. If you'd like to move on to your next point?
Okay, I, I thought, I thought this was intended to, to apply to.
No, it's quite clear in the motion, current serving councils.
I'm sorry, yes, you are correct. But I think there is at the same time, a process going to former councillors as well. And I assume that that same process might occur, but I accept what you say. I, I just think the word implied is, when people's rights are, are involved, the word implied raises, it can't be answered. And, you know, if you look at the dictionary definition, an express command, you know, express consent, or is one that is clearly and deliberately stated. Whereas implied is hinted or suggested, not directly expressed, for example, implied criticism. I just think that, you know, as a council, when we're talking about people's rights, we should ensure that nebulous words that even the High Court can't grapple with very easily are, are not used in, in terms of council decision making.
Thank you very much, Council. I think Council Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly can't comment, I guess, on, on case law or, or practice with regard to implied in the local government arena. I can, however, comment, having worked as a practising solicitor for twenty-three years in, in, in the corporate sphere. The, the, the word implied was very regularly negotiated by both parties, subject to a contract. One person, one party wants it in, another party wants it out. It's, one's wanting to, I guess, you know, have, have a broad definition of, of consent. Now, this motion actually relates very specifically to councillor expenses. For current serving councillors are published only for those who have provided their express or complied consent. When we're talking about, well, Council Tully talks about people's rights. What about our ratepayers' rights? This here is very limited. The, the use of the word implied is being used, used for a very specific set of circumstances. It relates to expenses. We're all obliged under the Local Government Act, you know, to, to declare our expenses. I, I don't see this as onerous. I don't see it as concerning or an infringement on, on my personal rights. And I, and, and when you talk about the word implied in negotiations, particularly commercially, one party will always ask for examples, as has been done today, of when implied consent may be inferred. What is the example? And it's, it's very difficult to come up with, with, with those examples. But in this case, it relates to ratepayers' money, so.
I concur, Council Doyle, you're talking about the fact that we're just looking at consent for expenses for serving councillors. Thank you. Council Fekner?
I'd just like to ask Mr Dun, I'd just like to ask Mr Dunlevy a couple of questions.
Can I ask Mr Dunlevy to, to lecton, please? Do you mind stating your name and your position, please?
Yeah, Tony Dunlevy, Manager, Legal and Governance.
Thanks, Mr Dunlevy. Just a couple of questions for you. So expressly, this does not include any expenses related to former councillors, is that correct?
No, it doesn't. As it states in the motion, it, it doesn't relate to former councillors.
Okay. And if I were to write to you tomorrow, because as of today I have written to you giving you my express, I have consent to, to publishing all of my expenses. If I were to write to you tomorrow saying, I do not wish you to publish my expenses, would you be obliged to take that down? And would implied have any implication as to whether you would continue to publish them, even though you do not have my express consent anymore?
Well, you've withdrawn consent, so we wouldn't be publishing them. So anybody can withdraw the consent at any time, whether you've expressed it or it's implied. And just to talk on the issue of implied as well, just implied generally relates to conduct and people's conduct and what they do. So as a very basic example, if you go into a restaurant in order to order a meal, you don't pay for that meal when you walk into the restaurant. It's implied there is a contract between you and the, the restaurant owner that you paid, you'll pay for that meal because you've gone in and ordered, ordered the meal. So that's probably a very basic definition of being implied, but it generally relates to people's conduct.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions, Council Tully?
Could you give an example in this context of how it could be interpreted that a councillor had given an implied consent?
In this context?
Yes.
Well, again, it, it just relates to people's conduct.
Yeah, but could you give me an example of what?
Well, if you sat, well, perhaps if you, if you were in the meeting and voting on the motion, there could be an argument that you'd implied to go along with the motion as well.
Well, then you wouldn't need this, the original motion.
Well, it could be express consent or implied consent. But it would generally relate to out of meeting conduct, which suggests that you have agreed to your expenses or any councillor's expenses being published in the hub. So it might be one or two sets of circumstances what might, might raise the implied consent. It's not just one.
Through the Chair, Mr Dunlevy, are you able to provide an example of where somebody may not want to have their expenses published?
From a practical point?
In, in, in this context, within local government and our obligations as councillors, our obligations with regard to the Local Government Act? Can you consider any circumstances where, to explain why somebody may not want their expenses published?
That's a difficult question to answer. I mean, we've got an obligation to publish it under the local government regulation. It's published annually in our annual report. So essentially what we're asking for here, or what's being sought, is a publication of the expenses, what will be published in the annual report on an ongoing basis. Each month, I think, in terms of how it's going to be.
So it's not inconsistent with the Local Government Act?
No, it's not. I mean, it's public money at the end of the day what's being spent. And there's a requirement to report it, but that's an exempt use of the information under the local government, under the Information Privacy Act to, to publish that information.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just trying to get my head around why an individual councillor wouldn't want any of the expenses.
of the expenses published.
Well, it's their right, but at the end of the day, I can't give a personal comment on that, that's a matter for each individual.
Thank you, Mr Dunlevy. Councillor Ireland?
I don't have a question exactly with this one, Mr Dunlevy, but...
Is it a discussion point? If it's not a discussion, we'll let Mr...
About the implied consent. If a person, because we know that we've written to all the previous councillors, if they don't...
So I'm just going to stop it right there, councillor Ireland. This is not talking about previous councillors, this is talking about current councillors. So I'm going to keep us to the point on this particular thing. Do you have a question of Mr Dunlevy regarding...
We're talking about...
So can I just check, councillor Ireland, I think your microphone's on.
Well, we're talking about directors of controlled beneficial entities, so I'm just wondering if no written response is given, is that implied consent?
Well, that isn't what the motion says, that's talking about the application which is already on foot before the Information Privacy Commissioner, and it refers to beneficial controlled entities.
Are there any other questions of Mr Dunlevy? Thank you, Mr Dunlevy, I appreciate you coming in today. As we go into further discussion, I think it's important to note that by virtue of section four of the Local Government Act, this council and our predecessors agreed that our moral, ethical, legal obligations is to ensure the system of local government is accountable, effective, efficient and sustainable. It clearly states that anyone who's performing a responsibility under the Local Government Act is to do so in accordance with the local government principles. Transparency and good governance are features of those principles. By taking the oath at our declaration of office, it is implied that we meet these obligations. It is incumbent on all of us to demonstrate that we are meeting our moral, ethical and legal obligations. And I think a reasonable person would agree that it is in the public interest to disclose how councillors and directors chose to choose to spend other people's hard-earned paychecks, harking back to what you said, councillor Doyle, what about the rights of the ratepayers? For myself, I don't support the repeal, as I do not believe it would be in the public interest to hide this data. In my view, the motion as it stands ensures that we are able to demonstrate that our conduct is lawful, ethical and appropriate, which is an implied responsibility by virtue of us taking office. The transparent publication of councillor expense data is in the public interest, and I'm not supportive of creating a loophole for people to hide behind. Is there any other discussion before I refer to councillor Tully for a right of reply? No, councillor Tully, would you like a right of reply?
Yeah, I thank the councillors for their comments and questions. This still raises the issue of what is implied consent. Obviously, express consent is very clear, and who makes the decision whether or not a councillor has given implied consent. Later today, I will be giving my express consent in relation to this, because as I said at the previous meeting, I do support the intent of the motion. I do not support the words implied in the current motion. We haven't got a clear answer, and we weren't given a clear answer by two council officers of what may constitute an implied consent. It's a very nebulous term, and the purpose of this was to, not to stop the motion, because the intention was if this were to be repealed, to have an identical motion with the words about implied consent removed. So, and I'll say this to the Queen's End Times again, I indicated my support for that previous resolution, I indicate it again today, and I'll be giving my express consent, but I still have serious concerns of a council resolution using the words such as this in terms of implied consent.
Thank you very much, councillor Tully. Those in favour of repealing these two recommendations, please raise your hands. So councillor Ireland, councillor Tully have voted in the affirmative. Those against, please raise your hand. It's myself, councillor Feigna, councillor Johnett, councillor Madsen, councillor Doyle, councillor Milligan and councillor Kunsman. Thank you very much. The repeal did not pass. We now move on to...
Oh, excuse me, Mayor, I do have a notice of motion to give that I intend to move under this heading at the next meeting of the council.
I haven't finished, we're on to the next item, are you doing a new...
I'm sorry.
You'll have to wait till the end of the meeting, we've got another item. 16.3, the notice of motion from councillor Ireland.
I'm sorry.
Yep, you're okay to do it after that?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much, councillor Tully. Okay, moving on now to, maybe the second last item, 16.3, notice of motion upgrading of unmaintained roads. This is a notice of motion submitted by councillor Sheila Ireland concerning the upgrading of unmaintained roads, and councillor Ireland gave notice of her intention to move the following motion at council's meeting today. And that motion is, A, that at least two unmaintained roads be upgraded to a maintained standard during each term of office, and B, that this be reviewed within three months of the 2028 quadrennial election. I'll hand over to you now, councillor Ireland, for you to move that.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to propose a policy for unmaintained roads, that A, that at least two unmaintained roads be upgraded to a maintained standard during each term of office, and B, that this be reviewed within three months of the 2028 quadrennial election.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that motion?
Yes, I'll second that.
Councillor Tully? Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer?
Mayor?
Thank you, councillor Madsen.
I did indeed raise my hand. I would like to foreshadow a motion.
Thank you.
It's been sent through to, it'll appear on screen in a moment.
Thank you very much, councillor Madsen. Well, it's coming, would you like to read it out, councillor Madsen?
So it's in three parts, so part A, that infrastructure and environment department develop a rural roads framework, which includes the following. I, development of prioritisation methodology for the upgrade of unmaintained to maintained roads. Two, development of prioritisation methodology G, for the repair of unmaintained roads. Three, identification of the top 10 roads to become maintained. Four, identification of the top 10 roads to become sealed. Five, identification of the top 10 unmaintained roads to have repairs. Six, consideration of the whole of life costs for gravel versus sealed roads. Seven, review of all the customer engagement system requests associated with rural roads. Moving on to part B, that a briefing be provided to council on definitions, treatments and high-level estimates for the rural roads framework, no later than March 2021. And C, that the prioritised list of projects as determined by IED be considered when developing council's 2021/2022 capital works budget.
Thank you very much, councillor Madsen, for that foreshadowed motion. We'll come back to the original motion, which is the recommendation A and B. Would anyone like to ask for the relevant council officer to come forward? No? Is there any discussion? Yes, councillor Ireland?
Thank you, Mayor. There is clear economic benefits to applying what former councillor David Pelkey described as a lick-and-spit approach to unmaintained roads. Ipswich City Council has not allowed prime movers in residential areas for many years, so these businesses have been forced to relocate to large lots generally in rural areas. In Division One, I know that cattle production is widespread and that cattle owners move their stock between properties, especially during this dry weather, and their trucks are therefore stressed on our unmaintained roads. Other industries I've noticed are cropping, logging, tourism, camping, a heavy earth-moving business and a school bus. Ipswich City Council has assisted Ipswich City CBD traders financially to improve their facade of their premises. And I ask, where is the quid pro quo for rural businesses? So I liken K and C in residential areas to filling potholes and grading on unmaintained roads, and seek support from councillors to improve the economy of rural businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Ireland. Discussion? Yes, councillor Feigna?
To councillor Ireland, do you think that the foreshadowed motion captures the essence of your notice of motion that you proposed this morning?
Yes, I'd say so, but I swear I vote for my own.
Yes. For myself, I'm supportive of the motion's intent, councillor Ireland, we've had many discussions about the roads, we just do consider upgrading an asset class over time. I can't support an uncosted, an unquantifiable blanket motion that pre-commits the council well and beyond its three-year capital works policy in planning. I think it would be irresponsible not keeping with the local government principles to do so. All asset infrastructure investment decisions must be considered in the broader scheme of prioritisation, sustainability. So I am sorry, I'm not prepared to vote for this, I will be supporting the foreshadowed motion, however. Are there any other talking points anyone would like to make to this particular motion? No? Councillor Ireland, would you like the right of reply?
I thank you for your comments, but I think that it's time that this council has some sort of a sub-policy to look at the unmaintained roads. As I say, there's economic benefit to it, and I'm happy that councillor Madsen has proposed his foreshadowed motion. I just think it needs to be upfront and we need to be looking at it. But thank you for your comments.
Thank you, councillor Ireland. I'll then put the original motion, those two recommendations, to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. You can vote with me. Councillor Tully, councillor Ireland have voted, councillor Doyle in the affirmative. Those against? Myself, councillor Feigna, councillor Johnett, councillor Madsen, councillor Milligan. Katie, councillor Kunsman, yes, councillor Kunsman, yes. So that motion did not get up, therefore we'll be going to the foreshadowed motion, which is before you there, from councillor Madsen. I now ask, obviously councillor Madsen, you're moving that motion, do I have someone who will second that there? Councillor Doyle? I now ask if anyone would like to speak to any relevant council officers to this? No? Would anyone like to, I'll now open up for discussion for councillors to speak to, councillor Madsen?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to commend councillor Ireland for putting this on today's agenda. For the best part of our term so far, we've been discussing this quite a bit, trying to make sure that there's fairness for all citizens of Ipswich regardless of where they live. If you go to a rural area in Ipswich, it's pretty common that they don't think that they get their fair cut of attention, and that's something that we really need to consider moving forward, is that, you know, what is a fair expenditure in all areas? In regards to the roads and the people that use them, I concur with councillor Ireland, it's pretty mind-blowing how many businesses are out there, and I think we really, really, really need to make it clear to the public, particularly at this point of the year, we've been in office for seven, eight months, we've been working on a lot of initiatives. Most of us are head-down bum-up people, so we don't go talking to the press about everything we do each week. We're working really hard for this, we're trying to make sure that there's equity provided to our citizens that need it, and I really have enjoyed working with councillor Ireland because if there are people out there that feel like their voice isn't being heard, she takes up the mantle for them. She's a formidable woman, and I look forward to spending the rest of the term working hard with her in Division One.
Thank you, councillor Madsen. Are there any other discussion points? Councillor Milligan?
Mayor, I do apologise, I just wasn't quick enough and getting my hand up when you asked if we'd like to ask any questions of the appropriate council officer. I'm sorry, I wasn't too quick enough.
Mr Doyle, would that be yourself? Do you want to say your name and your position, please?
Charlie Doyle, General Manager, Infrastructure and Environment, morning mayor and councillors.
Through the chair, Mr Doyle, would you be able to give us some larger understanding of, with respect to the foreshadowed motion that we're now working on? How IED have, what work, how would this fit into the operational side of council in terms of being able to deploy this?
Councillor, so currently the department is undertaking some of this work. The unmaintained roads aren't considered, currently aren't considered as part of our budgetary or capital works investment process. However, we are looking at these roads, we're looking at the unmaintained, well, rural roads framework in general, which includes unmaintained roads and gravel roads. In terms of the unmaintained, yes, we are looking at the roads that might warrant consideration of upgrading to maintained standard, and to be able to make that determination, or for council to make that determination in terms of its budgetary deliberation process, we are establishing some prioritisation methodology and some criteria around that process, which would give it some objectivity.
So this would fit into the work that is already being undertaken with respect to prioritisation of infrastructure projects?
That's correct, councillor. In some of the briefing sessions we've had with council to date, we've discussed a number of those items there which are currently in train.
Thank you. I think councillor Ireland, you had a question?
The residents I've spoken to aren't really asking for a maintained standard, they're asking for the potholes to be filled in the road.
So do you have a question for Mr Doyle?
Well, I'm just saying, it's a, I'm really looking for a sub-grade policy, I guess.
Thank you for that comment, councillor Ireland. Any other questions, Mr Doyle?
No.
No, thank you very much. So I think, opening up for discussion, I think councillor Kunsman, you would like to make a point?
I would regard this second motion, this foreshadowed motion, as an expansion of councillor Ireland's motion, not a change of her motion. The four councillors who have unmaintained roads are unified in our desire that this would be a programme and that it would be progressive. So this does not represent, sorry, to not vote for her motion does not represent any form of disagreement among the four councillors who represent rural areas.
Thank you, councillor Kunsman. Any other discussion? Yes, councillor Madsen?
So I was a bit...
Oh, sorry, before you go to your right of reply, so are there any other comments before we go to the councillor Madsen for right of reply? No, councillor Madsen?
I just wanted to raise before we voted on the matter, I got a bit distracted before sharing praise upon councillor Ireland. This council's committed to prioritising projects and looking at investment in terms of cost-benefit analysis and addressing needs. This foreshadowed motion takes into account that, but it also takes into account the commitment that I believe all councillors with rural areas really have to try to shift the status quo to something that works for all of Ipswich.
Thank you, councillor Madsen. I'll now move the matter to the foreshadowed motion to put to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I can see that it's unanimous, thank you very much. That is the last item today, but I believe councillor Tully, you said you had a notice of motion you'd like to put forward?
Yes, this is for the, you've noticed a motion that at the meeting of the Ipswich City Council on the 28th of January 2021, I will move that the resolution of council on the 26th of November 2020, adopting item six of the Government's Transparency Committee Report, be amended by deleting the words either their express or implied consent and inserting their express consent. I'll provide that to the committee after the meeting.
I was going to ask the CEO, this is a matter that we've now dealt with twice. What is the normal procedure? Okay, no worries, okay. Okay, thank you very much, councillor Tully. There been no others? I'd just like to say, it's been a massive year. I have tremendously enjoyed working with fellow councillors and also the council organisation. We've come in as a new council after 20 months of having an inter-administrator, and I can see Steve Grewood, our last inter-administrator, also who's been attending all the meetings this year as well as provided council to us all, I think. It's been a big year, Covid has hit, but I hope that we're ending on a high, where, you know, people of Queensland have been kept safe. We've had the eye-opening of Tumal Place. I think we can see with our Christmas programme and that Ipswich is moving on to better and brighter places, and I think on behalf of all the council, I'd like to wish all the residents of Ipswich a very merry Christmas. Thank you. I don't know if anyone else wants to say anything? Thank you, I don't think anyone else wants to say anything, but there's nothing else?